Ready. You all set?
All right.
Okay, we're all here. Okay. They're always such a show off. You ready?
Yep.
Hello?
My quote on the planning board meeting.
For this day, July 3rd, my name is Rachel McManus and to my left is.
George Ross.
Larry Murphy.
Leslie Matthews.
Pete Pickles.
Martha Taylor, town planner. Okay, I guess we did get some minutes. Did everybody get a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Leslie?
I have one minute coming.
Okay.
Oh, four.
Minutes, four. Find it, now it's here. Jeffrey is misspelled somewhere.
No, it's fine. Oh, I see it, yeah. Yeah, it's the very first item on the.
Yes. Other than that, it says Christine. I don't recall it also.
Oh, which one?
N D, first paragraph.
Which date?
The May 1st. Paragraph B, it says, in paragraph beginning. Of the title, that's the, uh, four lines by line of say, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven lines down. Says the bias confirmed that they intend to keep the newly created parcel in chapter. It was mentioned as sixty-one A before, so I think we ought to have chapter sixty-one A there.
Okay.
And. To the end, but controlling that they also understand that affidavit has to be, to that effect, needs to be filed. So that doesn't quite make sense the way it's written.
Yeah, the intention, I could rewrite that. The intention is that they will need to file an affidavit stating that they will.
Just those points with it out there. Uh, other than that, those are the only comments I.
So you didn't have any comments on the other?
No.
Anyone else?
Motion to move to accept the meetings with the method as discussed.
Both.
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
All closed? Okay. We have the financial reports. We've had some payroll warrants for the town planner and planning administration. For the pay period ending six, eight, two thousand nineteen, for the pay period ending six twenty-two, two thousand nineteen. And for the pay period ending six thirty, two thousand nineteen. We have also planning board members siphon payroll worksheet, uh, five-one, two thousand nineteen through six thirty, two thousand nineteen. We have a planning board expense invoices, uh, Verizon Wireless for the planning iPad, monthly charge of. Whatever it is.
Twenty-nine ninety-nine.
Thank you, dated. Six eighteen, two thousand nineteen, employee expense reimbursement for town planner. On six thirty, two thousand nineteen, and our fiscal year nineteen, encumbered expenses staple office supplies dated six twenty-five, two thousand nineteen. Then we have the, um, Meramec Valley Planning Commission expense invoices. This is for parcel mapping. And MMAP invoice for the Conne Newberry, and that's dated six twelve, two thousand nineteen. So. Even then, we still have five minutes.
We do. Well, I got the town planners report out here. Don't have much to report, however. Um, let's see. We've got a couple of potential subdivisions coming in. They're very preliminary stages, so I'm not actually going to give the addresses at this point. But I have had discussions with a couple of different, um, developers, one who has purchased a property, a small one, and the other one is, um. Is potential, we're agreeing, so just a heads up that we're going to have some subdivision stuff coming our way potentially. Um.
Where was that?
I didn't say.
Okay, I'm sorry I asked.
And we also, um, are going to be getting a site plan review application from the governor's academy for improvements that they're making to their French Student Center. Or the student program, which is called the French Student Center. Um, they're adding some classrooms on the second floor, filling in atrium space, creating a patio and a pathway out from the existing parking lot that goes down to the hockey rink. Um, I'm not quite sure what the timing is on, on that. I think the drawings are actually fairly well developed, so we'll need to set up pre-application conference and. So I'm working with their facilities director on, on the timing for, for that. And that's really pretty much it, I think.
Seem to have any old business or new business?
Well, the old business, um, I just carried, carried over the wireless communications. So I did put an inquiry on the master planners lister to see if they had any either consultants, um, whom they would recommend or, um. Um, any recent, recent bylaws or recently updated bylaws that you can take a look back at. Um, I did get one recommendation for Lisa Mead, interestingly enough. Um, so anyway, I will be talking to her about this when I meet with her. And I know Rachel has done some searching for consultants and came up with one.
Which was in Florida. Not local. But they, they're, what they described actually is exactly what we were looking for in terms of. Somebody to do an analysis and, and also be one that could recommend bylaws, et cetera. But like I say, depending on what, how they, how they work, whether they would send somebody up there or not is.
Is there funding for this?
Um, Tracy had, had said that yes, they will.
Okay.
So what I don't know is what we need to do in terms of procurement, if we actually need to, um. You know, issue an RFQ or an RFP, or if we can find somebody that we think is, is appropriate.
Well, at least that's an inducement.
Yes. Yeah, so I don't know. Larry, for not knowing how much this might cost, do you have any sense of whether we actually have to go up, issue an RFQ?
I don't. Yeah. I mean, you, you fall apart. Do you have a fall apart?
I don't. I'll say ten thousand dollars.
Oh, um, they're still doing that.
I believe that anything thirty or under does not, I'm not sure.
Well, yeah, I, I don't know if, um, what's, what's the goods and services thirty B?
Yes.
Procurement. Uh, I think you're right. In fact, I think that might have even gone up to twenty-five. But, uh, it, it gets very technical when you talk about consultants. You know, you have to really define what it is that, that the task is. But it might, it might come under thirty B, okay, in which case it'd be fairly simple.
Right, so anyway, I've been intending to talk to Tracy about that, but haven't had the chance to yet.
Yeah. We are very patient. If you get stuck, I, I may not know, but I know somebody who does.
Okay. Thank you.
So while you may or may not know, we get to start late if we have to, but we don't get to start a public hearing early.
I think it is.
Hence, we try to, when you're trying to get all the other people out of the way at first. So, but yeah, which often can work to our advantage to get, but we're not here until midnight. So that's, we're just waiting for the clock.
Do you want to try any liaison reports?
Well, I haven't, I haven't done, you know, I haven't had a meeting, so.
CPA hasn't had a meeting.
Okay, so I guess it's up to me.
Go again.
So the, um, selectmen did meet, um, last week on the twenty-fifth. Couple of things for, uh, relevant for us, and there were a bunch of appointments made to various committees. All of you were appointed to the master planning committee. Or reappointed, um, as the case may be. Um, so I hope you all go and sign in. Um, the Ogway Drainage Project was supposed to start this week. If you recall, the site plan application for that was before us, um, last year, I think. And the selectmen did vote, um, to waive the town's right of first refusal of the tennis court, uh, property. So they are, um, they worked with both the seller's attorney and Brian Winter, Lisa Mead's office, to prepare a, a notice, um, notice of waiver, which. Has been given to the selectmen this time, so I think that's in process. That will be sent by certified mail to the two sellers, and we'll need to record that at the registry, and then that process is pretty much done.
All right, I think we've gotten to the magic time. So I'd like to open the public hearing for Walk My Paws LLC special permit application for an animal daycare, daytime only dog training and dog play care at ninety Newbury Port Turnpike. Map R thirty-six lot nineteen. Property owner is Newbury Port Turnpike Realty Trust. And the owner applicant is Felice?
Felice.
Felice Bonfire. Do I get that right? And if you could read the notice, please.
Yeah, this is the public hearing notice. Residents of the town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, July 3rd, two thousand nineteen, at seven fifteen P M. The Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the second floor hearing room at the Newbury Municipal Office's twelve Kentway, Byfield, Mass. zero one nine two two. To consider the application of Felice Bonfire to Walk My Paws LLC for approval of a special permit to operate a dog daycare. Including dog play care and dog training at ninety Newbury Port Turnpike, Newbury, Mass. Assesses map bar thirty-six lot nineteen in the Business and Light Industrial District. Copies of the application are unfiled with the town clerk in the planning office, twelve Kentway, suite one oh one, Byfield, Mass. And are available for review during regular working hours. For more information, contact the planning office at nine seven eight four six five zero eight six two, extension three one two. All persons interested and wishing to be heard on the proposed special permit application should appear at the time and place designated above. By Rachel McManus, Chair of Newbury Planning Board, and this notice was published in the Newbury Board Daily News on June thirteenth and June twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen.
June eighteenth.
June eighteenth, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, well, not that we have a huge group there, but typically what we do, typically how we do this, is you will, you know, present to us what your plan is. And we'll ask questions, and then if anybody's here, they'll ask questions.
Wouldn't it be okay if my wife speaks on me? Um, public speaking, it's a tough thing, yeah, there is, so. Would that be okay, my girlfriend? So she'll start.
I'm going to start him on, I'll just get, kind of give him some courage.
He'll probably pop up.
Yeah, sure. Can you give us your name?
Yes, uh, my name is Lada Bonfire, um, and I'm Felice's wife, uh, and I've kind of been his coach, I guess, as he's paid through the Walk My Paws journey. Uh, which officially started just under four years ago, uh, in Southampton, Mass. Uh, for the last two and a half years, he's been running his business on a very small private farm, um, which has been wonderful and lasting, uh, but is outdoors, is completely outdoors. So it's really quite difficult to manage, you know, difficult weather, inclement weather, rain, snow. Um, it definitely impacts the dogs, and it certainly impacts the owners when the dog's kind of a little bit scrappy. Uh, so for about a year now, Phil's been looking for a breaking water, kind of property that allows him access to some outdoors, but indoors as well. Because the focus of the business is really on doggy, um, play care, not daycare. It's not your typical daycare where you drop off your dog and you leave him for four to eight hours. This is facilitated, uh, play sessions with very small groups of dogs for an hour, hour and a half at a time, with pickup and drop off. So what happens to the dogs is that they get mentally stimulated, they get physical activity, so they get their energy out, and then they, they get to work with a human, so they. Learn basic obedience, exits, stay calm, and that kind of stuff. So they do learn doggy manners. Um, that's kind of say about the business itself. Um, the way, uh, the way you source clients, Phil sources clients, has been so far very organic. It's by word of mouth or referrals, references. Which is why I could see in the paperwork that we're not seeking to do any external signage at this point. Uh, because what he'll do is he'll go and he'll meet the, the potential pup or dog that he's going to be working with. Then he'll, he'll work with the pup and the owners, because half the training is the owners themselves, not just the dogs. Um, and then he'll bring our dogs. We have Remy, who's an eleven-year-old border collie, who's quite calm and docile, and Bo is a four-year-old border collie, who's very energetic. So Remy kind of does the initial sussing dogs out, and then Bo gets introduced to a dog, and then they'll get to meet another dog from the pack. So it's very, um, structured as to how the dogs get integrated into the packs, and then they're integrated based on size and temperament and, you know, kind of mindset, attitude, really, with the dogs. Um, in terms of the plan for the facility, I'll let Felice do the, the difficult answering there, because he's been the one who's been focusing on the technical elements of what he's doing. Um, but he has outlined kind of what he was thinking. I will say that the time from when we signed the lease to when we, uh, came in front of you guys about a month ago was quite expedited. So we have a little bit of time to kind of think about how we might work things. When we first came here, we were, we had a general idea of what we wanted to do, especially within the space itself, which is going to require minimal changes outside of, um, putting some. Um, soft flooring on the floor so the dogs have, um, traction, and, and so that we can keep it sanitized and clean for them, so that they're safe. Um, and again, we're not doing any external signage, and we will have some fencing. What we've realized that in order to really focus on the safety of the dogs, it probably makes sense for us to extend the fence out to the front end of the property. There is a, a garage door in the front of the property, and the dogs get picked up in the van with a sliding door on the side. So if we extended the fence around, then that would allow us very safe to off the dogs, because we can open the gate, open the door of the van and let the dogs go into the fenced area. And then that would allow us safer egress and access when we're in the physical space as well. Can I tell you anything about the history of the business that I haven't already shared?
Share with us.
Sorry?
Share with us.
What is? Um, the history. You started off really small, locally. I, Felice always had an attitude for dogs, and obviously we've had Remy for eleven years, and, uh, border collies aren't easy to train, and she knows twenty objects, which she can kind of pick them up. So he realized he had an interest in doing it. Um, and then we got Bo, who is really ambitious and super energetic. Um, so I think Bo was kind of the real catalyst for you, um, making it into a formal business. Before that, though, Felice was doing some odd dog walking. He really did start as a dog walker. Um, and then very quickly realized that there's clients need their dogs to be taken care of, but they don't necessarily want their dogs to go off to daycare for four hours, or eight hours. Dogs don't always come home tired when they're in that situation, and it's hard to control dogs in that environment unless you have very strict numbers of people that are working with them. What he realized was is that dogs need that mental stimulation. They really do want that engagement mentally. And not all dogs have really great manners, or some of them, especially if they're, um, adopted, can be really scared and you can't handle being around large groups of dogs. So those are the dogs that he tends to gravitate towards. Um, and started with, I think he had two or three clients initially for the first six months. Um, but word of mouth does spread when someone is doing, you know, good, our pets are, are kids. Um, so it sort of just organically grew quite quickly, and your core client base you've had for the last three years, which closes a lot as well.
So I'm a little bit confused. Do you actually go pick up the dogs and bring them to your facility?
Yes.
Okay, so it, it, you don't expect that an increase of vehicular traffic?
Oh, not at all, no.
And that's what the clients like, is they like the fact that he's the guy who's in their house, who's picking up their dogs, who's taking their dogs to the facility, who's with their dogs and brings them home. It's that consistency that people need, so he does all of that.
How many dogs do you figure are in the group on a regular basis?
Yeah, average size is about six dogs. Um, sometimes we'll include, maybe a little depending, so it might go up.
That are included into the pack.
Yeah. Yeah, so it might go up to, you know, seven or eight, depending on whether they're both there. But it depends on the size of the pack and the size of the dogs that are in that pack as well.
So what's the maximum number of dogs you would anticipate at any given time?
Eight.
And, and exclude or include your two dogs?
Include your two dogs, yeah.
Cause I was curious, I saw in the material that you applied for a, a kennel license for ten dogs.
Yeah.
My understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not putting myself as an expert, but you only, a kennel license kind of implies overnight stay, doesn't it? I mean, you need a kennel license, isn't it?
Yeah, I think we were just following what we were being told that we should do. Um, we weren't, we're not seeking to do any overnights at this time. Um, we have had a couple of dogs that we have done.
Actually, no, actually, um, I'm not sure of her name. It was in Compo here. She said that you need a kennel license.
Slip, Leslie or something.
Yes, yes, so that's why I filled out for ten, ten, or maybe fifteen, I'm not sure.
And she suggested that we do more than what we needed, just in case.
I'm not saying that, that you shouldn't. I just.
I think it's in the law.
Yeah, a kennel license, mildly correct me if I'm wrong, is, would be a separate special permit if you, uh, want to keep.
If it was overnight, yeah, that's a separate, that's our separate thing. We are not seeking to do that.
No, not at all.
But I, I think, um. I didn't bring that up with me, but I think it is, it's called that if you're going to have any more than three dogs or something on, on the site.
Do you think the state requires anything more than three dogs?
That may be perfectly correct. I was just, you know, wanted to clarify what your, your expectations were.
They really, it's intended in short period of time, uh, now, go home.
Now, what's in this property right now?
Uh, it's vacant at the moment.
But the.
There was a garage.
There was, yeah, I think they did some car mechanics up there.
That, that's not what the class of car places is in.
No, it's next door. This guy was specifically worked on, um. Farm high sports, of that nature, specialized in European type of racing cars.
Is that right next to the closet?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, frankly, I drove by there today and I couldn't quite imagine, yeah.
There's a couple of properties, and I know that, a couple of buildings.
And, and is there a residential, uh, property to the south there?
No, no, nothing at all. That's why I was a little confused. I was like, there's no resi, I can understand barking being a concern, but there's really nobody around. It's all, it's all industrial, it's, it's all commercial, yeah.
So I understand where the plan is now. Do you envision, you know, the business going forward in future years of maybe expanding your, your.
We'd love to.
Well, expanding in the sense of hiring somebody to do the pickups, where I'll be the man in the place, training and do all the dog activities. And then maybe in the future hire somebody else to help me out, but as far as the number of dogs, like doggy day cares, kind of fifty dogs, forty dogs. Um, very small groups, like, like my wife was saying, eight, eight dogs. That's what my, my clients now are looking for, and they love it, you know, and. That's where I saw there's a demand, so, you know.
It's a bit of a niche business, you know, it's, it's separating itself from the, as I said, the regular doggy day cares. I think it would be wonderful. I mean, right now I have a great schedule, um, he met our son last time, so he's able to drop him off at school and pick him up, and he's home with him afterwards. So ideally, it would be nice if we had a proper sort of eight to five kind of business and were able to take on more groups versus more dogs.
I asked if that was the question I had. So how many groups of small, how many small groups are you hoping to?
Well, right now I have approximately three groups, so I'm looking maybe four, maybe five at most. I like to end in five o'clock. I have no, some, of course, that's when all the people get home from work and all my pets there as well, so. Yeah, so basically that's it. There's no overnights, there's no, you know, cars in and out, it's just me, it's just my van in, out, in, out, you know, four, four times a day, and that's, that's about it.
We'd like to grow the business. Obviously, we want to make money, this is kind of, we, we pay our bills, but. But one of the reasons why I think you've been so successful is the, the focus on that. That family kind of, that small size and the relationships that you're able to build. So that's always going to be sort of the core mission of what Felice does.
Absolutely.
What, what I'm coaching on doing, or cancel you on doing, but, um, that really is the focus.
It's worth the life.
That's why I'm here.
I guess the other thing that was a little bit confusing was the fence, so maybe we could kind of chat about where you think the fence is going to end up.
Yeah, it's gonna, at the beginning when I filled out the pic, it was all rush, because who wanted to get in? I reset the lease. So I didn't get permission from my landlord at the beginning. In the lease it says, you know, not go past the front, but keep the dog safe. You know, we have the big roll of doors. I was planning on, you know, getting on a leash and then bringing in the five, six, it was very dangerous. One run out of traffic this week, you know, you have a very good idea. Yeah, so I, my landlord gave me permission. He said, yes, that's no problem. I'm only going to come on maybe five foot, and then it's just going to go to the side there, and it's going to be confined.
Is it showing me on now these files, like where it doesn't go where?
I think it's hard to see it on the area.
Okay, yes, okay. You see white areas where the big large door is.
Yeah.
So I'm going to have the fence basically coming out five foot there, and then going straight over here, this is all an area, there's another photo. And it's just going to go back, cut off here, so when I open that big door, the camera just run out. I'll go into a little homing area, I'll open the next gate, and I'll just come to the side here. To, to relieve themselves, you know, to go to the bathroom. It's not much for playing, but more for the bathroom end of it. So if you, uh, see.
Where's your pen?
So what we're looking at here is where the, pull down, the, uh, door is pulled down. So I'm going to come out here, five foot, and I'm going to go across, and just come onto the side here. That's all it's going to be, and this is all going to be covered, and, um, and. Yeah, just a basic fabric. I may do green to, to blend in.
I could have black.
Yes, and basically, basic channel fence, um, that's it.
So most of the activity that is going to be inside?
Full doors, yes, yes.
So, five, you know, again, correct me if I'm misunderstanding, but.
Sure.
So if you're only coming out five feet, and you're going to have a gate there somewhere, so you're driving in, I'm not.
No, no, what I do, I have a van, I have a van, I put sidewalks here, and I just slide the door open, and then just go this way here.
Oh, you pull up. Okay.
And it's going to be, obviously, here and a gate here, so I can control them, control their movements.
And I'm just driving.
Yes. Well, you know, I just want to be safe. Everything, I've always been safe with the dogs, never incident, so I just want to, you know.
Keep, make sure.
My only members, so I just want to make sure that they're taken care of the correct way, and they go home the same way they got retired.
I know. But tired.
But tired, yeah.
Do you have two bins for the disposal of dog waste?
No, what I'm going to be doing is, um, company is called Doggy Do, I think it's called. They're going to, they give you a little receptacle that you put, I'll put inside this little.
That's a business.
And they'll come maybe twice to three times a week, and they'll just have to get out. So basically, it goes into a plastic bag, and then they take in their truck and they dispose.
Like they have a box, and same sort of concept.
Yeah, if you've seen how they come to your house, so if you're hired and they'll come and, if you're too lazy to pick up the poop from the old backyard, they'll come and scoop it up for you.
And the water?
It's, it's well water, it's well water, yeah, and, um, it's basically, um, I have fresh water for the dogs.
Where you're fresh.
Yeah, random, random, Poland Springs, that's what I, my one goes to.
It has been, oh, yes.
Yes.
So basically, I fill up the water bowls with Poland Springs, which everyone thinks are great. People come to my house and I'm pulling up Poland, I give that to your dogs. It's like, yeah, that's all they drink. So that's what I do.
The well water is contaminated or?
Yeah, I can drink the well water, you know.
Okay, but you can just use it for toilet facilities or what?
Well, well, they, toilet, yeah, yeah, clean, clean up, you know, e- every day.
Well, if you're hosing down outside and it's contaminated, is that an old ad hoc?
Well. No, no, we have a clean, there's different clean products. There's a daily clean product that kills all the. No, no, we have a clean, there's different clean products, there's a daily clean product that kills all the, um, stuff in the feces, uh, so they don't catch different diseases. But then there's a weekly one that you actually spray, where nobody can be around, and it seeps in, kills all the germs, and that's the same thing you do outside, it's gonna be on pea gravel. So, I'll spray it, you mix it around, you spray it more, and you make sure it sits there, for, I'll let it sit there for Saturday and Sunday, and then by Monday it's all gone, and everything is killed, any, any back areas.
It's one of us clean.
Yeah. And that's the same stuff I'll use for the rubber matting, which I'm have, I'm be putting down, it's about three eighths thick, and it's all sealed, so nothing can go underneath it, right? Yeah, and so anytime with nobody, I'll order the spot treatment, that right away you gotta do on it, and at the end of the day you clean it, and so it's fine.
Okay, it would be that if you go outside, but dogs have.
Yeah, yeah, so the first thing I'll try to do is to, you know, obviously go outside, and then work them into the in- indoor area. That's why I don't take anything from my old location, because as you're in all over, since it's been outside, they smell like they're on walking on territory.
I have a couple of other questions. So, i- in terms of, uh, if, if we were to put any limitation on the number of dogs in operating, operating hours, what would you be comfortable with?
Well, I, I do no more than ten dogs, but I keep it at eight with my two dogs, because.
But that's a, that's per group.
Per group.
Any one time, ten, any one time.
Right, so. Right, so times how many groups, so that's what we need to.
Um, right now it's three groups.
But.
But even a group.
I wanna grow, yeah, so, if you figure eight, 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 um, eight dogs a group, uh, four groups a day, five groups a day, and that's basically.
I, so, I, I would say six groups, given, given the eight to five timeframe.
Yeah.
That allows you time to pick up and drop off, um, in a path of growth.
Right. Yeah, no traffic, depending on traffic, because a lot of my clients are in Hammond and Raleigh, it's just, I make the rounds first.
Because it's.
So, what's the timeframe?
It's a lot of, it's a lot of proof, right, so I.
They get, they get, they get like an hour and a half, right now they get an hour, because a lot of the clients are around, so I have, and here I have to drive a little further, so like, give me maybe an hour and a half.
With transport.
With transport, hour and a half, quarter of an, yeah, uh, but I make sure I forget absolutely an hour, hour and fifteen minutes of physical and mental stimulation.
Including transport.
Because I don't want the dog going home being energetic, I want the dog going home to sleep, and every day I check in my customers and make sure that those dogs are tired, and if they're not, I adjust my routines with them. Give them a mental, less physical.
Are the owners encouraged to attend some of these, uh, groups?
Never, no, 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 they, they can, a lot of dogs I do now is I train them first, I don't train the owners and the dogs. So if they need some refreshers, I go to the house, I do a lot of onsite, so if I leave them on the weekend, the family, the kids, and do training sessions, that's right.
And also dogs will behave differently with their owners around, and so especially in the early days, everything is happening in neutral territory, not, not.
Yeah.
In our place or their house, it's always a public park or something like that.
Even when I'm. I never meet on the same block as the people, I'll meet them in Park, like Bradley Palmer, or Pat Park, I'll meet them there, because if you go to dog, the person's house, the dogs are, you know, they're.
Right, it's a territory, yeah, they act differently.
So, and a lot of times I'll just meet them on the walk, so, I said, just keep walking, I'll join up with you, we'll walk together, you know, just to break the dog into knowing me and not just say, hey, how you doing? That's when dogs are aggressive, and that's what I teach them, they're like, approach the dog this way, you know, A B C's.
I guess that the owners need training.
Yeah, more than the dogs.
Me too.
And do you have policies in play, you require the, the owners to show that the dogs are licensed?
Absolutely, they have to have a series of vaccinations, um, breakers.
Vaccinations. And, and we do every year, so every year we ask them to re-submit the latest vet visit and all the vaccinations.
And the insurance expert too, for that, so I have to have everything documented correctly, and I have a portal they use so they can log in, update their information.
Portal.
Port, 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 thanks, the portal, I have a portal where they can log in and they can update their information, scan in their documents, their records, and if the records are late, dog, I won't pay them bills. Because obviously safety is the whole, all the dogs need to say.
Simplifies puppies'.
Yeah.
So they'll, if, if, is it working with a puppy, then everything happens away until the puppy has all their shots, and then he starts to integrate with Remy and Bo and so on and so forth.
So, I do one, I work one on one.
Okay. All right, remind me of the, uh, Monday through Friday hours you have chosen?
It's.
I think we're looking at eight to five, which at the moment, so I think, you know, uh, seven thirty or six would be ideal in terms of being able to get the space ready and clean up the, the deck.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, let's say.
Seven thirty to six.
Seven thirty to six. And then Saturday, you know, I'm doing it yet, but thinking, you know, I have that option for, and that was like eight to two or something, or seven thirty.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, early, yes, and I'll use that more of a training, where I'm helping the dogs with the training, and not much, much of a play care, or, you know, go train around, play.
Okay.
And so we're looking at maybe forty eight dogs, so.
Yeah, so with their, with their two to fifty, right.
So round up to fifty-ish.
Yeah, that's what I have, anybody, I was thinking round it up to fifty dogs a day and then.
Thank you.
I knew she was on.
Well, I mean, just, just to give you some flexibility without having to come back here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Something, not that I expect, enforcement issues with these folks, but. It, it, that's very difficult to enforce, wouldn't it make more sense to simply put a limit on the number of dogs on premises at any given time?
Maybe.
I mean, I don't know with the.
And then, and then make them the flexibility, but it's still, it's still an hour or so.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and I would ask comely, if that's the direction we were going in, to consider that, that we are, we would like to hire people, eventually, we do wanna grow. So, I, I just sort of wanna, right now we're doing the eight dogs because it's one person, so you wanna make sure you can manage them, but if we have someone like you alongside us, then, you know, sixteen would be a reasonable number, um, to have and to hire some of them potentially, right? So, so I just wanna just say that we, we really do wanna grow, that's one of the reasons why we wanna.
No, sure, and we don't, we don't wanna unnecessarily limit you at the same time, I mean, if, if, if someone drives by there and they see eight dogs in the enclosure, they're not gonna know how many dogs are coming later.
Yeah. Right.
Might, is my only point. But you, but easier to quantify, is what you're saying, I, I mean.
Well, this, yeah, I, I, that's what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
It's on me, I, I will not take more than eight dogs, for the reason, for one person, for the reason of safety. It's the worst thing a business needs is something happening to someone's dog.
You know how quickly.
I, you.
Well, it's, it's.
So, if I have, it's a big enough spot where I can put a divider and have, you know, somebody there and one on the other side as well, so, like my wife said, increase to sixteen, that would be reasonable, you know, eh, but that's down the line.
And or is it reasonable to say eight dogs go one person, I don't know, I think, is that sort of, right, what happens when you hire two people?
No, 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 it's.
No, 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 I mean, I'm, I'm just posing.
Yeah, it's, it's usually, when it comes out of doggy daycares, playcares, things like this, one person should be able to handle ten dogs, that's, so, I don't know the ten dogs, I keep it at eight. Because I know the routines we go through every morning, and if I have more dogs, it's gonna be hard for me to do the whole sit, stay, the obstacles and everything else, it has to be at a certain level for me to be comfortable.
Well, I mean, you have a certain sized physical space.
Yeah, on site.
Yeah, why don't we say, why don't we go with sixteen?
Sure. Absolutely.
I mean, make a good point.
No, I'm, I'm saying you have a certain sized physical space, if you maxed it out.
Thank you, yeah.
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 Okay, how many employees, how many dogs?
Um, I'm not gonna go over, uh, space like that, I think, for, for my comfort level, sixteen, is, is me and somebody else, I don't think any more than that. I think at this point, no, but, the space is, you need a nice size, bigger space, you know, you see doggy daycares have forty.
You're good.
Oh. You have forty or fifty of, you know, you see them all, and they have, I think, one, thirteen.
That's the next team.
No, I'm, I'm not trying to artificially limit you, I don't, I wanna meet your expectations, the folks here might have a different perspective, so I'm just trying to get.
Yeah. Okay.
Handle on what your expectations are, what your needs are.
Yeah, like I said, most, the space here is, you know, twenty three hundred square foot approximately this year, so, if that, that time comes, I put a divider here, where there'll be two groups. You know, if that, you know, down the line, so there'll only be two people, I'm not, not looking to do a doggy daycare where I have tons of dogs, that's not what I do, I, oh, Jesus. You should have a rule or social.
So we need to say like, no more than sixteen dogs at each time.
I think that would be a lot, a lot clearer, I mean, it would be much easier to, to verify, I guess.
Right, and then, you know, they're gonna work within the hours that they said, seven thirty to six, so, however they.
Black and white.
Will you swap the dogs out every forty five minutes, every three hours?
Yeah, so that's up to you.
Good.
And then Saturday, eight to twelve.
Eight to two.
Eight to two, please.
Eight to two.
All right.
If they already have more dogs, they need to get more tags from the town clerk or.
Absolutely, yeah, well, I don't know, yes, if I do, put a kennel license, I'll have a, one more as well. And you'll know, because I don't have to come back to it, I should be awesome.
No, we're trying, we're, we're trying.
Thanks, you.
Thank you, I'll just send Devon next time.
So.
He was upset he couldn't come today, he wanna put a suit on again, so he's very upset, he was once, well, you got it.
Should you like to continue this hearing?
No, thank you.
You're good, you're good.
Thanks.
Uh, is there anyone here from the public that would like to comment on this project?
I want dogs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I think, I've, I've been very happy, I just had a similar, um, sort of arrangement with my dog when I was off at work, so, having them come pick it up and go off and do things and come back. One home and the dog's tired.
I mean, that's a long way too, they get tired, and they, 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 they're more polite.
And it's convenient. Well, they get, the, the socialization is huge.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, I'm glad, very happy to hear.
Um, so, I, that's, I don't have any more, so I guess we would, um. We have to draft the decision or?
Um, yeah, I mean, if you, if you truly feel that you have no more questions and there's no more room to take, maybe you could close the hearing, um, but not take a vote, cause once you make a decision, the, um. It has to be filed within fourteen days, and that's not gonna be possible, so, or you could continue the hearing to the next meeting, um, and.
Just to. I am paying work.
I understand.
And, yeah, and so I'm already paid for two months, and it's getting very tight for me, I'm just.
Understood, there's, there's just.
I know this process, I totally understand.
The board, um, will direct me to write a draft decision, and they will have to vote on it, um, so, until that's done.
And then wrap it up next month. Would you have a decision ready next month?
Well, actually, I have to on the seventeenth, I have to vote to close this out on the seventeenth, as soon as the decision's voted on, it can get filed with the clerk and there is an appeal period, but.
Yeah, uh, but one thing I'd ask, if, whether, you know, whether you guys choose, I, I still have to order a lot of material, which is gonna take another three weeks, but.
Three weeks.
Three to six weeks, and when I'm talking a thousand, I would talk to fifteen, twenty thousand for flooring and everything else I need to get, and this is holding me back from, you know, ordering, because if.
We wanna make sure.
Yeah, because it's restocking, they're all specially cutting flooring and rolls coming in, and if I don't, if I say cancel the order, I have to pay like forty percent restocking fee, and, and it's some of those are terrible, and I'll be around.
Well, what's gonna happen is, is that I anticipate, the way we're going with this, we'll probably take a vote on the seventeenth of July, guest file with the town clerk, and then there's a twenty day appeal period. Which is nothing we have any control over, so you're, you're, you're talking mid to late August before you actually have your special permit in hand, if that helps you.
Okay.
Uh, it helps, like I said, I'm already like, cost of time, I don't know, it's, it helps, it helps me, thank you.
Yeah, it does.
You're still continuing business in your, uh.
And my other side, yeah, but it's, yeah, but for me to really make the money I need to make, it's like, to cover the bills, the materials and everything else, it's, it's.
In your location right now.
At the end of the day, it's costing me forty grand, forty thousand, I'll decide when I'm paying them, I'll just accept the place off.
But and it states that, you, we just don't have any.
Yeah, no, 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 I, no, totally understand, I just wanna let you know what I'm up against and.
So, in terms of process, so, you know, so once the vote has been taken on the seventeenth of March, will we receive a notification letting us know that the, uh, vote has happened and so on and so on? Yes, yes, you will, um, what happens is it gets filed with the town clerk, and I send a notification both to you and to all the others saying, you know, saying what the decision was and it's been filed with the clerk and, and. That that starts the appeal period, so you will definitely know that.
Okay.
So, explain the appeal period.
So, um.
Just in case.
Well.
Yeah, so it's a twenty day period?
So it's a twenty day period, starting the day, day after it gets filed with the town clerk, um, and within that time, and, you know, anybody who has any concerns about the decision can come and, and. File, file an appeal.
Okay.
Once that's done, well, if that, if that happens, then.
Then it continues.
That it continues.
Just so you understand.
Right, thank you, Bob, right, um, and you'll be notified when the appeal period is done, if there's been no appeal, then you'll get a certificate from the town clerk, and that along with the special permit gets recorded, the registry.
Okay, okay.
So, I know it sounds cumbersome, but that's, that's part of the process, yeah.
It's not so much, it's, it's not, it, I mean, totally respect the process, I understand, but it's more, um. When you're dealing such a lot of summer money, you're not gonna do anything until you know exactly what you're doing, and so it just sort of, it pushes it out, up to it, but probably before we can.
It's part of the business.
Uh, you, you gotta make a decision when, when the risk is worth the reward, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because.
No, we're invested, I mean, we're here, we're, you know, we're fully invested, and we wanna make it work, and we just have to.
Yeah. But it's totally up to you, I mean, you can order your, nothing to stop you from ordering the material tomorrow, or on the seventeenth or eighteenth of last.
Yeah.
I understand, yes, there's a, a little risk in there, I just, you know, I truly understand, a lot of money going out, I'm sorry, but, you know, very little coming in, I just wanna get started, you know.
Yeah. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for doing this on the third of July, I know that's not the ideal time, so thank you very much, I appreciate it, yeah.
All right, so, let's have a moment to, well, I guess, let's, do we need a motion to have the draft decision?
Um, yes. It would be, it would be good to have that, yes.
Yeah, I guess you should do that.
Can we have a motion?
Okay, moved, that's the, uh, the, now I'm planning to prepare a decision in this meta, uh, for July seventeen.
Do you want the conditions?
Um.
You have every, yeah, but, the time, the time.
It's a number of dogs and the hours.
Number of dogs at, at, at a time, the hours, and the green on the fence.
The green.
Absolutely, yes.
Or anything, or anything but.
I mean, with purple plants, I'm excited. And do we need to be present on the seventeenth, or is it something that you do when I was present?
Um, well, it depends, if, if you're all going to actually continue the hearing to that date, you might wanna be present, is there any questions?
Yeah, probably wouldn't be a bad idea, hopefully it'll just be shortened.
Unfortunately, we do have another hearing.
And we do have another hearing before that's.
So, we're gonna close this discussion, we're just preparing to the decision.
Correct.
Okay, so do we have any other, any other reasons for discussion questions?
I.
I don't have anything.
Yeah, I'm tempted, um. I don't know, just waited for two weeks, no, the reason doesn't seem to.
As long as, as long as you all are sure that you've got all the information that you need and there, there doesn't be.
I don't know, you have a natty public comment, you have no one here, so I think.
You know what, I'd, I'd suggest you leave it open, you may have two weeks to think about it, you might, uh, have something for, you know, more that you wanna put forward. Maybe you think about maybe one twenty dog limit or something like that, you know.
It would also give you an opportunity to review the draft decision and have some input in it, which you can't have any input on.
Yeah, for the closing.
If we close.
I appreciate, yeah, I, I think that.
So, on the, on the motion to direct, a second.
Okay.
So we need a vote on that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fine. Any discussion?
Okay.
I'm not that you'll let us know what time, on the seventeenth, the board, the board has to vote on that right now, oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm learning, that's all right.
We're due to continue this, uh, the hearing, the seventeenth of July at.
Well, we've got the police station at seven fifteen.
Yeah, seven ten or seven fifteen.
I think it's seven fifteen. So, um, I don't think that would be enough time, if you wanted to meet earlier, like at six thirty.
It's okay with me, we don't take that long.
Six forty.
Six forty five, six forty five, six thirty, seven. Come at seven o'clock.
Um, we're just start with that.
Okay, so, so this at six fifteen.
What, six fifty-two?
Knowing how people it is, the most important.
Six fifty-two it is.
Six fifty.
Six fifty. Six fifty.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will start the meeting at nine, at six forty-five. Alright, thank you very much, thank you for your time, I really appreciate it. So I will serve in the draft. Thank you, that'd be great, thank you very much.
You too. And happy fourth.
Thanks, you too. Hi.
Hi.
Is there a particular reason that you, uh?
No, um, I was just wondering about the, uh, here it is again, coming up, forty B on Pearson Drive.
Alright, did you receive the letter?
Did everybody receive the letter?
Yeah.
Huh?
Did you receive my response to your?
No.
Okay, I mailed it yesterday.
Oh, you mailed it yesterday, oh, so I'll have information regarding all that.
Yeah, so basically, um.
Is it, is it on or off, or what's going on?
Um, we haven't received an address, so, um, we did receive a letter, um, expressing some concern about, from Mr. Rowe. Expressing concern about, um, the forty B site on Pearson Drive, um, still being in the housing production plan, which it's not.
Okay, well, I just looked up the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission.
Yep.
For the two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two, uh, plan for Newbury.
Yep.
And I looked at the site plan and Pearson Drive is still on. It's circled along with the other ones.
No, it's, um, it was, it was taken off, it's not on there, I think you might be looking at the Orchard Street one, which is right next to it.
Hmm, no, this is Pearson Drive, it's, if you look up the, uh.
I, I, I did before.
Yes, the Merrimack Valley, 'cause I thought that physically it would have been taken off now.
And it was, it's off the list and it's off the map.
So bad.
But only off the housing plan, you understand?
Yeah, oh, I took, I took, I actually got a picture of it. Off of the, the web, and I'm looking at it right here, Pearson Drive, it's circled right there. Fifty-five Pearson, as being, uh, part of the Merrimack Valley's plan. But if it is taken off, I mean, at least we could get some sort of letter, so I can walk around and tell everybody, hey, happy fourth of July. It's not on there anymore.
If you will bear with me for just a.
Oh, yeah.
I'm trying to pull it up.
And also, I, I heard there was some activity going on, on up there regarding wetland boundaries.
There was, yeah, so there was, uh, what's called an abbreviated notice of, um, resource area delineation.
Exactly.
An N-RAD which was submitted to the Conservation Commission.
And that was for a public reason?
And so it, it, it looks like somebody is planning to do something with the site. We did have a developer who was interested in purchasing the project, um, not before the board, but asking some questions about it. And, um, we haven't heard anything since, but the engineer who was involved with the original project did submit this N-RAD to the Conservation Commission.
Essentially, it's just to have agreement on the delineation of the wetlands on the property.
Right, that means somebody's interested in that site, and they may wanna do something.
But, but we don't.
And I'm wondering if the, the, this person is, uh, taking over the original forty B plan, that, uh, the great fellow there, yeah.
And we don't know, the person that, that I, that Susan and I spoke with was interested in taking over that project, taking over that plan.
Taking over that original plan.
Right, but we have not seen anything.
So we don't have the information that you're asking?
It's kind of off.
But if it was, if it was taken off the map completely, how can he bring it back and put it?
So what I, what I.
Cause there is still private property rights, the fact that it doesn't show up as a recommended housing site in a regional plan does not mean that someone could not develop it. It just means that it's not recommended by.
It's not.
Our planning process.
Well, it was not recommended by planning board in the end.
What, the board, the town, right.
A, a potential good forty B site.
That's the letter that he'll be.
Oh, okay. Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll run for this, it'll give you something to do tonight.
So I'm. I'm trying to, uh.
I hate to be a stinker.
I don't worry, just, you know, you have questions.
Is it involved a neighborhood?
You have to, but you have to, you, you give us way more power than we have, you know, in terms of, um, you know, what somebody can do, there are still private property rights and a person can
This is still the same.
Do what they're allowed to do with them, you know.
It's still staying private, you're, probably that's doing it.
I don't, I have no idea. No idea.
I'm just wondering if it's one of these shady deals where the great guy is still involved, but somebody else's, uh, his liaison taking, taking over the deal.
Certainly don't do that, so.
Alright, well.
Alright, so this is, this is the plan that's on the, on the website.
Yep, on the, the website?
On their website, npbc.org, it's a Newbury Housing Plan. And so here's the Orchard Street project that was before us previously, which is the most drawn, the Pearson Drive project was.
Oh, I get it, I see it now, so now it's not on there.
It's not on there, so it was taken, it was taken.
Okay, okay, you guys, you answered right, you did a good job.
So. So again, we, you know, the board.
Whatever happens, I know, you, you can't beat the state, you can't beat the federal government, but you can try your best to, to do what you can to convince people that, that it's not a great site to do something like that, but I still say, you know, the same thing I've always said. The cul-de-sac on the cul-de-sac with one entrance, with very narrow roads, really not a great idea. And evidently, everybody in the end agreed, but we'll see what goes on.
We will.
We're still on top of it, thank you.
Have a good fourth.
Yeah, have a good fourth.
Is there anything at the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission meeting, or was there a meeting?
Uh, there was a meeting, um, and it was the last meeting for the summer, there are no meetings in July and August. Um, they will be celebrating their sixtieth birthday on September twenty-fifth. So I guess that's gonna be quite a do at, at Northern Essex. So the main, the main piece of business at the last meeting, actually Tony Comornick, their transportation planning guru, um, gave an interesting, interesting discussion about the, um, uh, the transportation improvement plan, and just some interesting demographic data and stuff like that, and they've done a lot of work on it. So if you wanna read a really lengthy document, you can get it on, on their website, it's like a hundred and seventy-six pages long, so.
Wow. Those folks.
Yeah, so the only things on there that are in Newbury right now is actually the border of Boston Trail, the segment of it going from Georgetown to uh, to Byfield Center, which is of the tip for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, I believe. And they also had some funding for, um, potentially trying to do an off-road connection from there up to Scotland Road, but that's kind of problematic, we're gonna try to get a feasibility study done to see if it possible to go along the right of way of Route ninety-five on one side or the other. So.
It'll be interesting.
D O two felt that going on the road from Byfield Center along Main Street and South Street up to Scotland was pretty dangerous.
Yeah, all this, it's like, you know, sidewalks and stuff, so.
And it's very narrow.
Yeah, yeah, so, I'd come up with a better way than that. Is there anything, um, we're supposed to do with this?
You can.
We can if you want to.
Well, I could read it.
So should we attend this thing, I mean, is this, this is apparently a, a letter we received from FEMA um, discussing the effect of digital flood insurance rate maps for Essex County that were apparently issued on July nineteenth in two thousand eighteen under their map modernization program. So I guess they're pretty much asking for input into the quote flood risk review meetings, also known as work map meetings, I would think. We should appear it some.
Yeah, I thought I would try to attend the one on the sixteenth in April.
Yeah, that's the most convenient one.
Right, I was gonna check with, Sam is actually our flood plan manager, um, so I don't know.
Sam is?
Yeah, he is, so I don't know whether he or Doug is planning to attend, James and I went to one down in Hamilton a few years ago. So, um, I was gonna make sure that we covered one layer or another that I was planning to attend.
Okay. So it, is this where you get to give bona fide input into the way they've drawn their maps, or is this where they inform us of this is how the new maps are going to be?
The one that we went to, James and I went to, is kind of, they informed us that this is the way the new maps are gonna be, they gave us copies of the maps and then said, take these copies and if you have any comments, let us know.
Alright.
But.
Well, there are three dates listed here, um, it's on July sixteenth at the April Library at one thirty PM in the afternoon. It's Wednesday, July seventeenth at the Manchester Department of Public Works, uh, in Manchester, New Hampshire, if anyone's interested, and there's one. Wednesday, July seventeenth, the same date, at one PM, oh, the other one in Manchester was at nine AM, same date, at one PM, is at the New Hampshire Fire Academy. Um, Smokey Bear Boulevard, Concord, New Hampshire, so, if anyone's interested in those, I'm sure. Maybe we should all copy this and send it to everybody, Jared, if anybody wants to. Boy, I'm, I'm interested just to see how they do this. I think, I think on that date, I don't know, so.
And that's the day before the next meeting.
Yes.
At six forty-five.
At six forty-five. Alright, is there any other business, are they going to be aware?
Do you want to draw?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.